Welcome everyone. This is the night of the evening. Please stand and pledge their allegiance.
(Inaudible) 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 Good evening and thank you all for attending tonight's meeting. This past weekend, the village had two ceremonies regarding the Memorial Day observances. The first ceremony was on Saturday at the Rainbow Monument located at Clinton in St. James Street South. I would like to thank Bert Cunningham, the historian of the 69th honorary regimental headquarters of the Royal Chapter of the 42nd Division Association for conducting the memorial ceremony. On Monday, I had the pleasure of attending the Memorial Day Ceremony hosted by William Bradford, Turner Post Number 265, under the auspices of Commander Frank Tauschens. A Memorial Day Service was conducted at the Cathedral, followed by a parade and Memorial Day Ceremony at the gazebo on 7th Street. The event was very well attended and I was glad to see the tradition of the parade and participation of the school bands resume in light of the COVID restrictions. I would also like to thank all of those departments who assisted in preparation for Memorial Day Ceremony. We had a very nice event. Now we can begin with a nice regular board meeting. I'd like to call upon the department heads. We're going to begin with Commissioner Jackson, please.
Thank you, Mayor. In light of the tragedy, the mayor requested that I provide a security overview of our schools and of the village's open facilities. Try to be as brief as possible. 2005, we did our first assessment of the Godsey School District, where we did a district-wide security assessment. 2018 was more comprehensive. They hired a security agency, we assisted them. But one of the main proponents of that 2018 report was the cooperation that they have with the police department and the input that we have, and very rarely see the amount of input that the police department has with the school district. In 2018, we also assisted Homeland Security with district-wide transportation security assessment. However, the security assessment goes on every day now. It's not long, no longer just a one day, we're doing a report, you know, a six-month report. It's continuing and it's an ongoing process. But some of the improvements I like to talk about, taken by the district, was the help of the police department. The department has access to the district camera system. They also, the district has instituted camera upgrades and added more interior and exterior cameras, better quality, again, we have that. We have the floor plans, both electronic and in written format, in each vehicle, and also police headquarters, so we can help follow the suspect. Provisions were made into the building's locking systems. Department has keys to the schools and locks boxes. That's a box that a lot of businesses have outside, the fire departments use it more than anybody, but you can get the key and get access to the building. We also have key fob for entry doors. There's a one-button lockdown system headed to the buildings. We also help them get the RAVAP to allow the staff to may prioritize 9/11 calls to the police department via alert, text or voice. If they don't say anything, we contract. Youth officers frequently visit the schools, whether in session, after school programs, special events. I go with the youth officers, the students know the officers by their first name, so to me, that's a great, that's a great thing for us to have. One child told me today they saw Officer Tiffany. We also have patrol officers frequently conduct walkthroughs. We call the Special Poli- walk through all the buildings and the grounds of each school. These patrol vehicles equipped with active shooter weapons as well as ballistic vests and helmets. Police officers attend active shooter drills at the Nassau County Police Academy, public and private schools. We actually did one in a local school in this area, Nassau Community College. The district utilizes a security consultant during school hours and has special events. We have a very good relationship with that consultant, where we can talk about what's good, what's bad, and what needs to be improved. Numerous lockdown drills are conducted, normally three to four per school. The department conducts a debriefing after each one, so we take the staff of the school, along with command staff of the school, and we go over any issues we saw, any improvements or what we liked or didn't like. We also conduct debriefing after serious incidents. For instance, the Stop the Shop incident, we had a flea burger by one of the schools in a sewer school incident a couple of years ago. We had major debriefing sessions after that with the entire staff. And that goes a long way of identifying issues and correcting them and really, and also identifying what they did right. Because I'm telling you, when you do debriefing assessments, you will have to tell the people what they're doing right. And when you tell them in an open room with all the staff present, people, it's a training. They see what that person did correct, and I think it's done a lot for our assessments and also what we do in the schools. We also participate in district-wide health and safety meetings. We check the phones in each building regularly to ensure the 9/11 calls go directly to the police department. So a lot of large businesses, the phones, you know, their truck systems sometimes, they will not go to directly to the police department, or we won't get the correct address. In the old days, we would say the administration building, and you'd either be at the high school or a home set school. Today, they're individualized, so they bypass the public system. The district has added security features inside the building to help deter slow and stop intruders. We have great cooperation between the police department, Dr. Sin, and our staff. Police department and schools conduct threat assessments by monitoring social media and other resources. If you went on Facebook today, everybody was posting what was going on in New York City and other districts. So we're on it, we already knew all the information from Nassau County intel, and we're working on it, and we always assess if it's a problem that may appear here. PD is also in contact with intel sources regarding possible threats and suspicious behaviors. And one other thing, when it comes to equipment, we'll be adding some more equipment in the future by using our roster forfeiture funds. The commissioners of the mayor, of course, and the detective sergeant means the school staff and their security consultant, and also BOCs. On a regular basis, we review their security policies and practices and upgrade and replace where necessary. We also tend the annual staff meeting at the beginning of the school year to reinforce the important security and situation awareness. So for 30 minutes, I got listened to me talk, which is not a wonderful day sometimes, but I like to drive things home. Detective Sergeant, the youth detective also received Homeland Security Training regarding multi-hazard emergency planning for the schools. Department also has shared planning bulletins and active shooter training sessions originated by our federal partners. We have worked with our federal partners in a lot of many ways, and we get a lot of training materials from them, but they say we can share with them. There's some stuff we don't share, but a lot of the real good stuff shared with the schools coming from our federal partners. Private schools, we're contained in the same, we have a lot of the same things going on. We have met with all three schools very recently. We did a lockdown drill yesterday in one of the schools. One school already has the RAVAP system, two others are, one's ready to join and the other's considering. We continue to work with them. It's a small, you're working on one school, so you're basically working with a principal and assistant principal, and in the Catholic schools, you might be dealing with the district supervisor, but I'm telling you, the cooperation is just as good at the other schools. It's really doing well, and I'm really proud of that. That's moving forward. Also, the mayor asked me to look at some of the village areas, you know, the open areas that are open to the public. And we have, we started with Village Hall. In 2014, I was able to look at, get a grant. We had to do an assessment, but we needed this grant, it was a grant opportunity, and we got the grant, and that was the basis of our start of our security system in this operation. So based on our grant, based on the assessment, we had grant funds received, and we enhanced security infrastructure of the headquarters, which includes Village Hall, the police department, the court, the fire department, and then we expanded. We expanded to the building department, the finance department. We also added panic buttons and a lot of crucial areas. We did active shooter situation when the training, combined with Homeland Security of Nassau County, and we presented to employees, and we have additional sessions to be scheduled. The library, much of the same things were done in the library. We also, we did, helped with a major security assessment in 2018, which resulted in additional cameras, security guard, revised policy procedures, and environment of design input. Situation where the training also was conducted, again, more in the future. I want to say, Village Hall, Karen Mr. Swazie, great cooperation, that's what you need, and all the department heads. We have great cooperation, global blocks. Sorry, DPW. Village parks, we've worked hard with Paul Blake, we've talked about a large area. We have added cameras to a lot of the parks. Music Park was really upgraded. We also have yards into the parking lot. St. Paul's facility, we're adding a lot of cameras, that's an immense area, but we covered, we covered a lot of that area, a lot of the crucial infrastructures in that area. So we are moving forward with Paul's help on that one. DPW, the water infrastructure, we had cameras, fobs, and alarms, and there's special type of alarms that we get from the water facilities, and they are working well because we do respond to them from time to time when they're activated. So, you know, in closing, we continue to evaluate daily, and we evaluate the important cooperation we get from our various stakeholders. I will say, you know, I'm in business 41 years, and the cooperation, especially in this type of field when it comes to security, is, you know, it's been very well received from the board all the way down to, you know, the supervisors in the various departments. The cooperation, I've seen it's immense, and, you know, and I'm very proud of everybody getting involved. So we'll continue working in the training process, you know, like I said, we did assessments several times, but today, the assessments just continue. Information evolves and changes, and we're trying to stay at the front. We're working with our partners in Nassau County, all our village departments. A lot of things going on. I think we had over 20 incidents the last couple of days in various school districts, and we all share and working together, and we're trying to learn from it. And everyone, what we did through our intel, I sent it to my officers, so they see what's going on and see how the departments have responded. So we're moving forward, working hard. The mayor and I have been talking many times over this, and we're really trying to stay ahead of it. And also trustee Orion and I have discussed this several times in the last week. So we're working hard, and we've got a lot of good feedback, especially from the schools, specifically principals, and Dr. Sin, I am really happy, and the principal at the high school. So, you know, again, we're going to continue to work hard, and if anybody has anything, please call us, and we'll do what we can to, you know, to do the best we can to, you know, to address this situation that's ongoing, that's going on in this world today.
Thank you, Commissioner Jackson. And again, I really, it's unfortunate that we have to react to events that happen throughout the country, but I'm glad that you're on top of everything. It gives us a great comfort level.
Yeah, just to commend you, Commissioner Jackson, for your standing work. I hope you can be here 60 years. But I also saw some of those beautiful letters from the principals and the teachers and so on, commending your officers. Terrific. And you're staying ahead of the curve, I appreciate that. And I like the fact that you do the debrief sessions, lessons learned, kind of thing. I was just curious, with the recent shootings, right? Will you eventually do an evaluation in case that would ever happen here, God forbid, on what went right and what went wrong? Is that a good idea?
Oh, absolutely, that's what we do. We did that at the Santa Hook and other instances.
Oh, you did, great.
Yes, we do, we've done tabletops. We've done, we've done, you know, like threat assessment, training, we definitely did. The Stop the Shop was a perfect example. When Stop the Shop hit, you know, my detectives determined that this guy was running basically through our village to a hemset location, where everybody else thought he was going to Long Beach. And we dealt with the schools, Adolphy, Waldorf, a lot of other establishments, and everybody's, everybody's plan went into place, and it did very well. I mean, there was a couple of glitches, but we addressed it with them, and we individualized each premise, each, like the district, the Waldorf, the Adolphy, we individualized, so we were bigoted about their particular issues. And what I didn't talk about, but we also have a very good relationship with Adolphy. We utilize their command center at times. They have a very good plan in place, which we had out beginning, and also a marine base. So we, yes, we do, and also, we've had training with Nassau County, because the courts are really in northern city, so we also work with our partners on that side too. So one thing about us, we're involved with everybody. We also, I also touch base with the railroad, and, you know, all the police departments involved that, you know, where we work together, and we may need their assistance, because an active shooter is basically all hands on deck.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I think your report reassures a lot of parents in town as well, so the teachers and students who were all affected by the shooting, so thank you for your great work.
Yes, and I just urge everybody to be vigilant and, you know, report anything unusual.
Thank you, Commissioner Jackson, for that thorough report, and it does, as Tom said, give comfort to the residents, to us, that you're thoroughly prepared, because it's very easy to result blank. But in Uvalde, Texas, as in Parkland, Florida, apparently the lead, law enforcement issue on the scene made the assessment that it was not an active shooter, and almost like it was a hostage situation. And that was unfortunate, but you seem to have your force and you have the planning ahead for something like that.
Yes, we usually wait until the whole report comes out, because, one thing in the police world, every situation should be, and sometimes, you know, you take certain actions, and sometimes you don't take certain actions. So I like to see the report, but again, we will study it, we look at other reports. Each case is a different scenario, but again, we constantly go over it. I went into the roll calls that we had the last few days and just talked over what we knew, and asked the guys personally what we had done. And if you heard the answers of my officers, you would be confident, that these guys really, you know, take this stuff seriously, and again, they walked through the schools, and they actually did assessments while they were walking through the schools this week. Most of the stuff was great, so, but again, there's always something, you can always approve on, and we make suggestions, and again, Dr. Sin and our staff is very receptive to our suggestions.
Thank you very much.
One other question. 911 does not go to your department, correct? It goes to the dispatcher in the county?
Okay, landlines come to us.
The landlines will go to?
So the building phones come to us. One of the, no, the cell phones go to the county, because they go through towers, so the tower, I mean, I'm just certainly being the village.
Right.
The RAVAP goes to the county, because what the RAVAP is, a prioritized call, it jumps every call, so when you do a 9/11 call, it's in sequence. But when you do a RAVAP button push, it goes right to the top. And then the dispatcher, and what happens, it goes to the county, but the county then hooks us up right away, and then we're both listening, and we're both responding, so something like that, they're going to get a door response, sometimes walk-in app.
So for those people that have cell phones, it's probably a good idea to give the, your emergency police number in addition to them having 911, have a guest to plug it into their phones. Is that a good idea? Or just 911 you're?
I think 911 is the way to go, because you don't want to have people think too hard. If something's going on, 911, there's this one switch button, and a lot of times, we get a call, like we'll get from New York City, we can switch right into New York City and Suffolk County. So I would just say dial 911, I don't want people to think too hard with what I'm dialing.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're the expert on that, I appreciate your feedback.
Well, I don't know what else to say. Next, is Fire Chief Perrin.
Good evening, Commissioner Mayor, board trustees. The department has nothing on the official agenda. I'd just like to advise everybody, there's some program members for the month of May. The department responded to 113 total alarms. The majority of them, 100.0 exact, were signal eights or lesser alarms, automatic alarms, government outside alarms, things of a lesser nature. Seven of them were general alarms, reporting some type of odor or smoke in the building. Two extrication calls and three calls to assist neighboring departments. Other than that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
One quick one, Chief. I think it's good for the residents to know, I know you, because I said, drew it, you do lessons learned on your fires too, so that you show the other volunteers what went well, what they need to improve, that sort of thing, based on the circumstance.
Yes, so after every event that requires one, we'll sit down as a department, go through what the operation was, what it entailed, what went well, what didn't, what we improve on, because I think everyone in the world knows, everyone can improve on everything, no one's perfect. So we sit down, we do an honest assessment, see where we have room for improvement, also remind members what went well, what we build off of, and we go from there. Thank you.
And now the police department and fire department do what you brief with each other on a major incident. Actually, the fire department did a great job over the last couple of days with some fires, but we will debrief them if there's an incident, and also they did a good job with the supermarket, with the Freon link. And, you know, and we also had a leak after a truck hit the train overpass, we had a DEC leak. So we always speak with them too, and we go over everything. Also, if we have an incident of a serious nature, in the, like we talked about earlier, we go to fire and go and stand by and make their appointments.
If I may, just to thank the commissioner, we have a great working relationship, our two departments. Basically, any alarm we have, at least one or two officers are showing up. Again, depending on the severity of the situation, who may, you know, show up on scene, including the commissioner himself. We have a fantastic working relationship over the years, and again, just want to thank him and this department for all the efforts over the years.
Yeah, that was, evidence of that was that terrible car crash at the railroad, where the car blew up. Yeah, that was good teamwork.
Thank you. Next, village administrator, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, trustees. Finance department has no items on the agenda tonight. Just want to update you, of course, our fiscal year ended May 31st, so we're busy working on our year in the books, and I'll be writing an update to the board at the next meeting.
Thank you. Police superintendent Giavina.
Good evening, Mayor.
How are you?
Good, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, board of trustees. The building department doesn't have anything on the agenda as well. I just wanted to remind the board that the amnesty program for the building department is still in effect till the end of July. I also want to remind the members, the residents here, that if you do have a private building permit, any work that was done without a permit, please come onto the building department and file on that, because the amnesty program does go to the July, end of July. Other than that, Mayor and trustees, if you have any other questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Thank you. Questions? Next is Commissioner Paul Blake. Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. There are two items on the agenda tonight that fall under recreation. First is a request from the Recreation Commission to authorize establishment of a dog park on the village property at 2nd Street and Hilton Avenue. Second item, number 10, is an award to bid. This is for assorted clothing, actually, the uniforms that we purchased for our part-time and seasonal help in the playgrounds and pools. T-shirts, sweatshirts, polo shirts, sweatpants, other things like that. And that's all we have on the agenda. I would like to remind everybody that the pool is scheduled to open a week from Saturday. If you have not gotten your pictures yet, please go down there and get the pictures. We are anticipating quite a crush on opening weekend, because everybody has to get a new picture this year, and we've hammered that, hammered that, and I'm not sure that the message has gotten out. We really don't like having long lines for our residents and our members, so anybody that's thinking of joining the pool, or if you already joined and haven't gotten your passes, please go get your photos taken. And that's all we have time.
Thank you. Any questions?
Commissioner, the mayor mentioned at the beginning that there was a ceremony on Saturday, and I wanted to thank you for the work that your department did prepping the area there. It just looked great, and thank you for that.
Thank you. I've mentioned it before, we have an amazing crew in my department. I work with amazing people that are very talented, and the results are because they love what they do, and they do a good job. Thank you, that will be passed on.
And I want to echo Commissioner Blake, a particular employee, Stephen Barnet, has been very, very helpful with the planting that is now going on, although it ain't have you. He's worked well with Paul Rothendiller from my third track committee, as well as Celia Peterson, Manscape Architects, so he, whenever we've asked him for something, he's done, whether it's take down a tree or whatever, he's been excellent, so I wanted to say that.
Thank you, I'll make sure he hears that.
Thank you, Paul. Next, Peter B. How are you?
Hi, Mayor. Members of the board, as is common, our office assisted the various departments in their individual agenda items, but our office has no one item on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. This evening, I'd like to welcome Mr. Anthony DeRosa, our new director for DPW. Thank you. I'm not asking you any questions, I don't think you have to respond to anything this evening. I think you have to just take it all in, and we'll get to you next time, for sure. All right? Thank you, thank you. Next, Ralph Swazie, village administrator.
Good evening, Mayor, board, members of the public. I also too want to welcome Mr. DeRosa. I wish you very good luck here in Godsey, and I will do everything I can to assist you in your work, as will the other members of the executive team. Item number four on the public works, there's approval of rates on call GAS support services with HRM Architects Engineers, order authorization requested to approve the hourly rates submitted by HRM for on-call GAS services. Rates are on file in the village clerk's office. These on-call services will be capped at $7,500, and I'll come back to the board for any additional monies that may be necessary throughout the year. Item number five, acceptance of maintenance bond, interim emerging containment treatment at well number seven. This is a maintenance bond that's in effect for 18 months from the date of acceptance in the amount of $85,420.4 cents. This basically guarantees the work that was performed at well seven. Number six is board authorization requested to transfer funds of $45,000 from engineer regular salary to engineer contractual services to fund the engagement of engineering services. Specific engineering services who want to engage, we're asking the board to authorize engagement LPMA to complete task numbers 1A, 1D, 1C, and two of the cost proposal matrix, you have backups there, to evaluate the existing catchment area and design drainage improvements for the scribe portion of the village, and to create a comprehensive assessment that should include various strategic plans, but that's been pricing for improving the drainage in existing catchment area at a cost of $42,800. Just for background, members of public might be here, for the trustees, the Meadow Street area, we're talking about the area from east of Clinton, over the Grove, Meadow Street, up to commercial. During the most recent hurricane season, on Ray and Ida produced excessive flooding there. I've learned from that experience from the residents that it's been flooding for over 20 years, so I only heard about it this past fall. Nonetheless, we looked at it, we worked with the county to check, check out their drainage, make sure there's no breaches in the drainage structures. We've now concluded, and that's why this is here, that we have a drainage assessment done by professional engineers to show us where we can make improvements to capture the water pour gets there, or to improve the drainage in the area. We don't know until we get this, whether we're coming back with more money to actually implement it, so that'll be a second phase, but we need to get this done. Number seven, rehabilitation of paving stones on Franklin Avenue, 7th Street, New High Park, cancel contract. Last year, we had a contract to pull road ahead of work, they did a road program, they also were supposed to do all the paving stones on Franklin, 7th Street, New High Park. Basically, they asked to withdraw for the contract, we never gave them an order to proceed, and they were having trouble doing the road program, and then when they finally got through that, they, they edited this contract, they couldn't hold on to the prices. So we want to make it a formal thing of the board, get out of our processities to accept this rejection, this cancellation letter. Number eight, St. Paul's roof replacement emergency project, change order, A. Herron Holzman, Inc. This is to approve a change order submitted by A. Herron Holzman, Inc. in the amount of $149,640 for additional damage roof areas, not figuring into original sculpted work. These areas were discovered when the contractor started to make his repairs, this is when they were up on the boom lift, and it was determined that they need to be addressed at this time. The board of trustees approved the estimated cost of $321,400 on March 24th, 2022. Just to add a little more information, the village was notified this afternoon that FEMA has approved the extension until October 1st, 2024, to complete these roof repairs. That makes the village eligible to receive 75% of these costs, which means we will receive back if we spend these monies, $353,280 from the federal government, which means the net cost of village repairs will be that $117,000. So this is, it's good news. I really want to thank Irene Boo's team, Godsey Apartments specifically, also Mr. Giavina for being on the phone with myself and FEMA to discuss the damage, and also, you know, this, this flat roof area was damaged extensively during some storms, hurricane events. The original stabilization project had the flat roofs in a phase two, we never completed phase one, and the phase two damage that was awaiting us couldn't hold up to the wind damage that came from the subsequent storm, so this damage that FEMA is covering, the contractor, Mr. Giavina, I can speak to him, they've been doing an excellent, excellent job of building, putting back new infrastructures that I think can secure a roof too. Mr. Giavina, do you want to add anything?
Raf, I think you pretty much covered this far, you know, what the contractor is installed and his work. I did have backup paperwork to that, I did send to the board as far as photographs of current inspections. I did have the opportunity with the contractor to go on that boom lift and do some visual inspections of the structure that was done and was performed, and was able to see other outstanding things that need to get done in order to, at least adhere what's actually structured.
at least adhere or to actually, structurally stabilize what's being done. If not, it could compromise the work that's being done if we don't complete, um, each of the, of the areas of the roof.
Can I ask a question? Is this work, um, this work that's being done right now, it's not gonna be taken out? It can be used in case the building is, is repurposed?
That's correct.
So it's, it's permanent?
This is permanent. It's not temporary. They're actually stabilizing the areas in order to adhere the roofing substrate and the membrane, uh, for the, the additional cost, um, they're asking is for all flat roof areas.
I have a question with regards to FEMA. You say they grant us an extension, but does no guarantee we're getting reimbursement? We are applying for reimbursement, but there's no guarantee, am I correct?
I don't know how to answer that. We, in the past, when we've applied, for a few funds we've gotten, and I, I don't think it's optional. I think they, the fact is, they, they asked us to, about the project, um, details, very extensive, because we had three people on the phone. We described the project, why it was delayed, what we're doing, what the workload was, what the costs were, and they had to do a process to assess the extension. I don't think they would've done that if they were going to say, well, thanks for all the work around it. So I think it's pretty much a guarantee. But, Miss, we'll, if you have different experience, we've never been turned down for a few funds, to my knowledge.
Yeah, my understanding, based on prior experience, is once they grant a extension, that they would, uh...
Once it grant, once the extension is granted, it's a guarantee.
That would be seventy-five percent.
Right. During, so, in the past, like, when, when, when the superstorm Sandy came through, New York State also had like a fifteen percent mess, so the community's got ninety percent back, seventy-five from FEMA, fifteen from the state. This didn't rise to that occasion. The state isn't paying any, anything, but seventy-five percent is pretty good on the line.
Giuseppe, can, I know you guys, a few of you, including Fire Chief, did a walkthrough, and you saw the damage from the previous, uh, hole in the roof. Just, can you tell the residents, just sum it up on what you saw? And also, if you don't fix the remaining leaks, what could be at risk?
Well, from the original walkthrough, which we had with multiple, including, including the chief, um, as far as the, the water infiltration that, that, that happened throughout the, the process of, you know, um, of all the rainstorms and so forth, of day-to-day, um, rain, the, it caused multiple, um, floors and ceilings to collapse throughout the building. Um, it's, it's becoming, it's, it's becoming a safety hazard if we don't address the, the concern. And you, you really have to stop the water first before you're gonna even enter the building. Um, so by doing these repairs, we're stopping the water from entering the building, which can stop some of the, the damaging of, of the interior of the building and try to salvage, you know, if the building ever was to be salvaged, we, we have a, a pretty good start and a chance to. Um, e- even with the building, even with the roofing repair being done, we, we still, we would still have to do that anyway, because I really wanna make the building safe for the actual abatement crews to come in to, either adhere to all the mold or any kind of, um, rem, um, remediation process that needs to occur for, for the building itself, even if we weren't to choose, choose the day to do. All right? The building has to be safe. Uh, the openings throughout the roof need to be closed.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Just to clarify, are there openings now, or is it just, I thought when I asked you earlier, there are no longer any actual openings in the roof?
There's no longer gaping, gaping holes in the roof of the mansard and some big openings in the actual flat roof, but there are still holes that need to be addressed. Maybe they, maybe holes the size of, of two-by-two areas or four-by-four areas or what have you. But these are unforeseen conditions that you really can't see from either a drone or a camera or what, or a lift until you really get up close in person or can look at and see the areas to, to really assess the condition. So after doing an assessment of the whole entire area, the contractor determined that this is the outstanding cost to complete each phase of each roof.
You went up there also.
That's correct. I did, yes. I'm holding the contractor responsible for everything that he's doing. I observe the areas myself. I think it's in the best interest of the village to actually perform this work. If not, the money, the two, the three twenty-one, or three seventy-one we spent is pretty much lost.
I, I also, I failed to mention, I'm sorry, uh, pardon me, failed to mention that the funding for the stabilization project is there already. We're using existing funding that is unused. This is before FEMA credits are returned, so we have a hundred ninety thousand dollars, I think, in that capital account right now, so the full, this full hole.
The change was one forty-nine, right?
The change is one forty-nine. We have one ninety in there.
I'm sorry, just, just to clarify, 'cause I'm, I'm just getting some mixed, um, confused on, are there holes? If there are holes, did you see them? How big are these holes? 'Cause I thought the holes were taken care of. This was just some damaged area in the roof that they wanted to address. Maybe water was seeping through, but it wasn't raining into the building anymore. So did you wanna, was that in the materials that was sent? Pictures of the damage that are now considering addressing?
The, the actual spot, check of the holes? No.
Why wouldn't we have that if we're talking about spending money?
It was actually, it was sent in the report that, um, in, the analysis of what the contractor submitted to us, as far as what needed to be done for certain roof areas and what square footages were left off. So he actually, he, he counted square footage, square foot areas. I'm saying holes or areas. He's actually, square foot areas of material needed to complete the process.
Right, but what is it? Are there holes?
It's roofing membranes that basically, is exposed. It's, 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 it's exposed roofing substrate, which need to be addressed.
When you say the substrate, you mean the sheathing?
The sheathing, the plywood.
So the water's going through, there's no, there's no roofing membrane at that location?
Correct. Certain areas you really can't see unless you really get up there and, and assess the area.
I thought you sent photographs.
I did. Yeah, some, some photographs of, of certain areas were sent previously. And just to get back to, um, Trustee D, and as far as the, our first initial conversation with FEMA, we, I sent original photographs of the original roof showing all the substrate that was actually peeled back because of the wind and those holes. And I, I was very, um, as far as FEMA, they understood the process that needs to get done, and I believe that we will get covered to seventy-five percent with, from that first initial conversation, just by the, the original photographs I sent to them.
So do you think you're done after this next round? Or is it open-ended and you go down to the thirty feet and find some more holes? Like, I, that's what I think is gonna happen.
I, I believe this is, this is gonna take us where we wanna be, to make at least the roofing substrate members what they...
The other thing to clarify, when you, um, what was previously approved is going to be completed next week, and that, we will be submitting for the reimbursement from FEMA. This is a separate area of the roof that is being contemplated now. So it will not affect what was already approved. What we're submitting for reimbursement is not impacted by whether or not we decide to do this further roof work.
That's correct. If the board chooses to leave well enough alone, we will take the expense of whatever we spent, the three twenty-one, submit that to FEMA and try to recover seventy-five percent of that.
And you mentioned, I guess, when you went to FEMA last time, you had these pictures showing this storm damage. Do you have anything similar on this new request? I don't think you do.
I don't at this time. All I said was the inspections, photographs showing the structural stability was done, was done according to the New York State Code, and they put that, before, and performed a detailed inspection, and I, I think it's acceptable to the village.
But, but to be, but to be clear, though, this money, there was three twenty thousand dollars that was approved on March twenty-fourth. This is above that amount, right? Now, Ralph, what were you saying about there are funds actually available to spend for this?
So the original, the original stabilization project had, um, two million plus dollars. What I'm saying is that the money we spent already and the money we're about to spend falls within the last, uh, so there must've been three twenty-one, three, there's about six, there were about five, six hundred thousand dollars there before we spent the original three twenty-one. Now there's a hundred ninety thousand left in there. So the one forty-nine we're asking for, for this work, is covered by the funds available. So once we pay this out, there'll still be another forty-one thousand dollars there. When the money comes back from FEMA, I, I'm not sure accounting-wise, it goes into, or rarely you find, or goes back to the capital project, but it comes back to the village in some form. So, so then it offsets the cost. It might not go back to the capital, uh, bucket, but it's back to the village.
I also just wanted to mention to the board that, um, the cost, the total cost will end up being four seventy-one for the entire project, and that still is the lowest, lower than the second lowest bidder to this project. So we're still four within, within that, within, within the lowest bidder, for saying.
Have you gotten any assurances from FEMA on the second roofing project as to whether it would be considered storm-related damage and...
It's all storm-related. Whatever we submit, we're gonna submit the whole entire packet to FEMA and request the seventy-five percent for the project.
So you're gonna submit...
Four seventy-one.
I'm sorry, you're gonna submit the three twenty-one plus the one forty-nine?
Correct. It's all, it's all related.
So it's all budgeted, and we stand a good chance of getting seventy-five percent...
I believe so.
Of the three twenty-one, four hundred that's in our budget, that we, that we're spending.
Well, the payment reimbursement is gonna be the three fifty-three if we request the seventy-five percent. We get the full reimbursement of the seventy-five percent.
So we're covered on budget-wise, and we have a strong possibility of getting that percentage back?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, President. Thank you, Ralph. Any else, Ralph?
No, sir, that's it.
Any other questions for the trustees?
Okay, I, I was gonna mention, thanks for embarrassing the Meadow Street issue. I know you did an extensive study before putting this together, so good work.
Yeah, the, the engineering department were close to on this, and we did, the county was very cooperative, too. You know, trying to figure out exactly the cause and effect is difficult, and the, I wanted to mention the water and sewer department, Dan Simone and his team. We had a camera in a truck, it's called, they call it an unit vision truck, and we actually went in with this camera, and they ran it down the entire length of the, of the pipe under the sidewalk to make sure we had no collapses in our own infrastructure, because we didn't wanna fix the wrong problem. So we know, we know where the problem isn't. So there's, there's a lot of volume of water that needs to be intercepted upstream before it gets to, uh, the college in Tremont area of all that. And we also wanna do this before the road gets paved. The, the water main project that started last, um, summer, took a break for the winter, and they picked up again on, um, I think Tuesday this week. So they're out on the west side of Meadow now, west of Clinton. And when that's done, there'll be a repaving project of Grove, Commander, Lindberg, and Meadow. And we wanna be sure if we do any drains in the Meadow area that we do before we pave. We don't wanna over-paving, and we don't wanna bypass the, um, drainage.
Good work, Ralph. Thank you. Thank you. Um, before we get on to agenda items, I wanna make, uh, one change this evening. Uh, the establishment of the dog park will not be discussed this evening, because the board is requesting more information, so I'd like to change the agenda.
We're here for that, sir. We're all here for that.
I'm sorry.
I took off on work early for that, please.
I'm sorry, but the board doesn't have enough information regarding the dog park?
Even the residents.
Well, that's, I think, I think that's, that's the issue. If you don't have the information, we don't have all the information. So rather than to just open up the discussion...
We can make comments, though, correct? We can make comments?
Can we have any comments?
Another agenda item?
Okay, so we have agenda items. Okay, so those counts as wise that we can put as a non-agenda item and discuss as a non-agenda item, right? However, however, we're gonna start with the agenda items first, right? So...
I'll make a motion...
Thank you.
To remove the dog park from the agenda.
Was that comments?
There may be no comments, but this one will be from the, from the actual formal agenda.
Non-agenda items.
Right. Motion? Second?
That's not right, though. Come on. We all showed up for this thing.
Sir, please.
I'm sorry, but you're right, but, you know, my time is valid with you, and it's not fair.
All right, you'll have your chance to speak.
Okay.
We're gonna give you an opportunity.
Someone, someone dropped the ball here and not giving enough information to the, uh, board, so I'm upset with that, but that's okay.
Well, things happen, unfortunately.
Yeah, unfortunately.
We're gonna have to work it out.
I know.
Are there any specific comments on agenda items? These are agenda items. Sir, please come up. State your name and address, please.
Steve Ardi. Steve Ardi, one thirty-nine Meadow. I'd just like to thank Ralph to, uh, for all the work that's been done on the Meadow Street flooding, um, that, you know, started out of the E P O A. There's a group of residents, doesn't directly affect me, I'm a little bit east of the flood area, um, but there, I know there's residents here, um, from the area that has had damage to their home more than once from flooding. So I'm hoping that not only this first phase goes through, but once this study is done, that the corrective action takes place to eliminate the flooding. The village did a very good job on St. James South and Washington a year ago or so, where there was major flooding, and completely eradicated the problem, so I'm hoping the same happens here. As far as the item seven, the paving on Franklin and Business District, New High Park Road and stuff, I hope whatever money was set aside for that, you know, will still be there when, when this project hopefully gets rebid and reworked, and not that we take this money and maybe, you know, patch up another roof at St. Paul's or something else. That has to get done at some point, so I hope the money stays for that when it gets done. Item eight, the, all this FEMA talk and everything, um, what happens if there's a, a vote in the fall, and the votes to demolish the building, and then we submit this to FEMA and we want all this money back for a roof that is now in the dumpster? Has that been approached or discussed, or will we still get the money?
So let me, what is this? First, I wanna just thank the residents on Meadow Street who've been very patient and communicating with me and being very professional about the questions. I've responded to them openly, honestly, and I've communicated the same information to Meadow Street, they talked to Commissioner Arnold about in the county, and I communicate to the board, so I really appreciate their, uh, their communication with me. Number two, as regards to these paving stones, the money for the paving stones is a capital project, and they're coming to be used for capital project. We just received our bids today for the road program, and the work of the paving stones was incorporated into that bid, so we have, so we can pursue it with the contract, who are hopefully going to hire on the June sixteenth meeting. The other question was the...
The FEMA money with St. Paul's?
Yeah, so I, I think we should put the request in for the funds immediately, just in case, but I don't think, I don't really know how they handle stuff like that. I think once they make their commitment, uh, it's, uh...
You know, that's, that's a concern. How much of the, I, I don't know if you know, but one and a half million has been spent out of that original two million. How much of that was reimbursed from FEMA?
The other work is not FEMA-related, but it's storm-related too. I see as that storming waters in two thousand...
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments on the agenda, please?
Hi, Steve Iris, Fourth Street, Garden City, uh, manager, Swazey. While you're over there, check Commercial Avenue. It floods every rain, including this afternoon, and it's just the drainage basins that overfill.
So just so you know, that I'm very aware of Commercial Avenue, because my son goes to Hofstra, and I drive it all the time. Commercial Avenue is being repaved in this year's program, and one of the things we're looking at is the drainage capacity. We're making sure the drains aren't clogged. We're making sure there's sufficient capacity, because the, the, most, a lot of the drains go into the park, there's some drainage structures in there. So if we have to increase the capacity, we'll make sure the infrastructure as, as designed is working, and we will add capacities. Every, like the Mr. Ardi mentioned about, uh, St. James and Washington last year, uh, first, first, I hate water, I want you to know. So we want to get rid of it as soon as we can off the roads. So we want to get rid of it as soon as we can off the roads. If it's dangerous for drivers, it's just not good, so we are aware of it, we're working on it.
You have the park there where you can put all the drainage you need.
There's already drains in there, sir, but the thing is, are there sufficient capacity? The storms, the storms of the last decade or so, the drains that was designed thirty, forty, fifty years ago, the curb, I see, just don't keep up with this, so. But as we redo roads, we're, bless you, as we do roads, we are looking at drainage structures where we do parking lots, the same thing. So we're very aware of commercials, getting a new face and it's going to...
Thank you, I trust that you're looking at it. The other comment I have is, I've stayed out of St. Paul's, I've lived here since nineteen fifty-eight. I went to St. Paul's for three years, I know the building well, and you know, there's a saying, if you build it, they will come. Now, we don't have to build it, we already have a building, all we have to do is stabilize it, open it up, and if there's a problem using it, turn it over to the Garden City Real Estate Professionals, there's actually an association by that name in town, and a use will be found for it. Obviously, building maintenance one oh one that I'm sure they would teach in shop in high school, if there still was a shop and it was called a shop, is that you fix the roof first. Water is insidious, it'll find its way in through the littlest holes and work its way around and get to places where you don't want it anywhere inside a finished building. So obviously, building a fence so people can't see what's going on, I don't know what that costs, but had that money been spent on the roof, we may not be here tonight talking about another hundred ninety thousand or whatever it is. But I speak as an owner of an historic hotel, National Historic Register, which I saved from a bulldozer and it's functioning for its hundred and thirty-first year. I say to the guests and I say to the board that as our country becomes more and more diverse, and I say that as a statement of fact, not a political commentary, that's where we are, all that we have that will unite us in the future is our common history and culture. And frankly, our common history only goes back about, what, two hundred and fifty years? So those of us who are trustees or entrusted with maintaining that common history and culture must do it and that's to have our citizenry have this common culture. I get visitors from all over the world to my hotel, their culture and history goes back thousands of years, ours only goes back two hundred and fifty years. And a building like St. Paul's has to be saved and there will be a use for it and thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. What is your hotel, sir? I'm just curious.
Where's your hotel? This is right.
I'm sorry.
Oh, glad that you asked. It's a four thousand feet of elevation in the Blue Ridge Mountains of North Carolina, Westmoreland, North Carolina, in a town called Blowing Rock, W-W-W, greenparkin.com. And it's Garden City-owned and New York-managed. Greenparkin.com, look it up.
Any other comments on agenda items, please? On agenda items, agenda.
Agenda, not agenda.
Agenda. You're not copying, sorry.
Charlie, the note one thirty Meadow. Thank you, Mrs. Slazi, for all you know. I'm just curious to get more information and transparency on Meadow. I've done some initial investigation or, you know, I should say research, and I'm told that there is a brook where all of Roosevelt Fields, rainwater runs off. So my question is, does that run through Garden City and where does that go?
Okay, so I'll tell you what I know, but before I start, let me tell you that I know less about this than I want to. There is an underground stream that runs along Meadow.
That was going to be my next question.
Yeah, there's a stream and the stream, I believe, the county, the county has a culvert during, the culvert is basically a square box. So the culvert runs along the stream, there is water being caught north of us, but I don't know the county's drainage maps and structures that well, but there is county water from outside Garden City going underneath us and it empties out through the culvert, which is above ground in Hampton, goes into Hampton Lake. So my engineers followed the culvert out of Garden City to Hampton Lake and they observed like debris in the visible area and we contacted the county with photographs and said, can you have your, your teams clean this? Because if you, if you put things in the way of the water, that means it slows down and the water that's on its feet can't get down, there's no place for the water, so by moving along fast, we're hoping that's what the street does. So we're trying to increase the margins of error so that when we have a major storm, and by the way, I just wanted to just tell people who live on any street, no matter how much we design drainage, a storm like Sandy comes along and it exceeds the capacity, you can't build, you never know what the capacity needs to be, you do your best. So we're trying to increase the margins so that the water that's falling gets out of it quicker or you capture it somewhere else upstream or divert it to other areas where the capacity exists. So it's a matter of diverting the water away. Now, the county water is underground, so it's not, what we're worried about, though, is that the culvert was filled so much water that it was backing up through our storm drains because some of our storm drains went in there, so we were thinking of putting backflow devices there so that the water couldn't get out. So we have other techniques besides just to increase the capacity we may need to put into effect, but right now, we don't think the culvert's the problem. We think it's just, you know, the college area where it's filling, it's like an actual sum, it's a low point, and the water flows east and west and south, right, through those points. So we think that this study's going to show us to capture the water at certain points along the way to keep it from getting down there. Plus, we're going to try to increase the capacity at the point of impact so it gets off there faster.
So on Meadow Street, right, we have what we call catch basins?
Yes.
Catch basins. Where does that water go?
So the catch basins, so catch basins are either negative or positive. Positive catch basins go into, they find a way through water like the ocean or along the sound. Negative ones bubble down into the ground, they just, they have rings and they fill up and they seep, they percolate, that's the word, percolate. So Meadow is a positive system, but I'm not sure if it's positive all the way. I think the stuff upstream might be negative. I'm not sure how many of the catch basins attach to the culvert. I believe the ones down Tremont and College are positive, but a lot of them are negative. So when they, the way the negative ones work is that when they fill up, the roads cross the street to the next one and that fills up and rolls, it keeps rolling north to south, that's how, the whole line is designed that way. When they overfill, they flow down the road to the next one until they get a positive one. So that's how it's designed, but there's still a lot of capacity there. It's, you know, when you have, when you have three inches of rain in an hour, that system works, but it floods because it can't get anywhere faster. So again, I'm not an expert on it, a lot of it's on the ground, we build and bury stuff all upon and government, but the county's been very helpful. This study will do a topography of the area, they'll look at the size of the basins and they'll probably do some observations of our main stones as well. So we're going to take a good crack at it and to my betting, if I, if I know any ten structures, I'll have a twenty in there on that side.
So do you know what the timeframe or the timeline is on that?
So we put out an RFP for, we put out an RFP to multi-engineering firms and we got some back and each of them had different timeframes. Some of them had timeframes of five to six months, some of them had four months. The costs were very high, much higher than you thought, so we decided to split it in half. We said, hey, we have engineers in the house, let's have them do the planetary study, which might take eight weeks, and then we'll do the design on our own timeframe internally. Once we know what they recommended, we'll do the design and then the question comes, how many places do we have to touch? So if they give us ten or twelve points to do, it's much too much for our internal team to do in a relatively quick time. So I go back to the board and say we need fifty or sixty or seventy thousand dollars, whatever it is, I'm just guessing. And then we would hire the contractor that we just, we're about to hire for roads on the sixteenth, storm drains and catch basins are in that bid spec, we would have them do that as part of their work and so we could accelerate the work by having an outside contract ability and maybe supplemented by our guys who work two or three.
So we're looking twenty twenty-three?
No, no, we're looking, well, I don't have the data in front of me, but I think the study, if it's awarded tonight, we'll get the insurance from the, actually, work with the engineering firm, so we should get it out there quickly, cut a deal for them tomorrow or next week and they'll get their engineers out there and work on this and we'll, I think about eight weeks, so we're talking probably about the end of July, early August. Once we have information, we'll go as best we can, so it might not happen till late summer, early fall, and that's right around the hurricane season, but not every storm's going to give us three inches of rain in an hour. So listen, across my fingers, it's been twenty, it's been twenty years, but like I said, I've got this in September and I act on it immediately, so it just takes a little while to get things done.
All right, thank you, thank you. We just asked for continued transparency and I speak for the Meadow Street...
I answer every email I get, but at some point I apologize if it comes, if it comes seventy-two miles later, I've fallen out.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other comments?
Ryan Mulroney, one forty-seven Hampton Road, want to comment on item eight, the St. Paul's roof. And just for transparency, I am head of the finance subcommittee for the Mayor's Committee on St. Paul's. So when I was looking at this and when I was named to the committee, I saw the finance committee's job to try to anticipate in our, you know, best, best, best estimate of what a refurbishment, restoration of the building will cost and what a demolition will cost and give those two numbers to the village and let the village have a referendum based on what they get and what it costs. I think the trustees have to anticipate either way the vote. If the village votes to restore, refurbish St. Paul's and we leave holes in the roof for a cost of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which we think will get seventy-five percent back, I'm doing the math right, correct me if I'm wrong, it's about thirty-seven thousand dollars, five dollars a household. And if it is passed to, voted on to refurbish and restore and we go through another hurricane season without a secure roof, will be, the residents be saying, why didn't the trustees secure the roof like we've been saying for the last twenty years, why didn't we secure the roof? And if we then have to secure the roof before we restore it, in a year from now, whenever the plans and financing go through, what do the costs then? They seem to go up weekly, right? Well, FEMA is still covering after we made the proposal and now we've, that's been closed. Now, if the residents decide to demolish a building, I believe we'd still have to secure the roof in the building so the abatement could be done. So we'd still have to do some amount of work. How much will the amount of work cost then? You know, again, things go up every week. So to me, you know, doing the finances of this, it'd also be helpful to know the building is secured, so when we're trying to estimate the abatement either way, we know what the costs are. And, you know, I just think, you know, I get, I get the point where we're going to be here in three weeks and it's going to be another hundred thousand dollars. I understand that, but we do have to have faith in the professionals and make the best choice. And again, I think it would make it easier to do the finances if we know the building is secured before demolishing or restoring. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mulroney.
Thanks for...
Any other comments, please?
My name's Bill Gary and I live forty-two Locust Street and also for transparency's sake, I am on the Mayor's Committee. I chair the Subcommittee on Historic Research. I'd just like to make one simple observation to urge you to repair the roof. I believe we need to stop the damage and I think that's in all residents' interest. I think if you're an advocate for demolition, and there are no shortage of those gentlemen and ladies, it's actually in your interest. That building has many highly valuable, rare, salvageable building materials, architectural treatments, ornamental treatments, building materials that are rare and valuable, and they are mostly salvageable, although some of them are no local salvageable because the mitten tiles on at least one floor has collapsed, that's not going to be salvageable. So I would like to suggest that it's in your interest, all residents' interest, to fix the roof and stop the damage, to preserve what we have and get what we can out of it, even if we have to demolish the building.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks, Bill. I think we have an organ from England in there, a very large organ in the chapel.
Yes, very rare organ shipment, very salvageable, functional.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
Sir?
Chris Mullin, one twenty Meadow. I believe I have one of those negative drains in front of my house and the water overflows and my yard becomes a swamp. So, bear with me, I'm reading your suggestions here and we're talking forty-five thousand dollars. Is that correct, forty-two thousand dollars?
Forty-two thousand. We transferred forty-five thousand.
I've been a contractor for thirty years, a roofing contractor in the middle of Manhattan, Brooklyn, Queens, the whole nine yards, but I won't talk about the roof, but, all right, but, but forty thousand dollars is not going to help an engineer to really look and evaluate this problem. I've got water that goes from one stop sign to the other stop sign. This is serious. This is not a joke, a game. I see cars flying through there, I see homeowners lifting up silver lines with their fingertips. This is a lawsuit. This is crazy and as a contractor, which, you know, we have insurance and stuff like that, but it's just insane. And I think forty-two thousand dollars is, is, I mean, I appreciate it, I know you've been on the phone, emailing my wife, my wife loves to do that, emailing stuff, as far as that goes, and she's been talking about it in the middle of the evening when we have to sleep and I've been listening to her as far as that goes, but this is the first time I've seen those. And as a contractor, we all know, I could go through forty-two thousand dollars pretty quickly. You know what I mean? So...
So, Mr. Mullin, we did put out an RFP. We, we, the original estimate we got from LKMA was a hundred and seven thousand dollars, but that was to do the forty-two thousand dollar worth of work. There were, if you recall, I mentioned tasks, there were four tasks that we're doing, there was a list of maybe eight tasks. They had a six-month window of time. So when we got all the RFPs, I had this engineer put together a spreadsheet of each response, the dollar amount, the length of time, because I knew, as long as we were asked how long, I don't want to wait six months to get...
Don't interrupt me. I don't mind how long it takes. I want, I want the, what I've always noticed, we all know, smart people are smart for a reason. They make good decisions, they evaluate the situation. I want a smart engineering company to evaluate, I don't care if it's a hundred thousand dollars or not. I've got water coming up to my driveway where I parked my beautiful car and I sit there and I say, is the water going to make it or not? And then I go, where am I going to put the car? But I can't go anywhere.
So we took, we took the task and we said, listen, we really need them to evaluate the flows of water, the capacities, the drainage. We need to know where the problems are and then bring recommendations to us and then we'll take over. Because the next, the rest of the sixty thousand dollars was to put together a bid package and put out the bid for five weeks and then, you know, have that process. So I feel that, that this is a serious enough problem, once we understand where the problems are, that, and with recommendations that we can design internally, I'll come back to the board. Now, we still have a problem with bidding, but if the board is willing to declare this an emergency with hurricane season coming, we can bypass competitive bidding and just have our road contractors, because we already have the structures in there, just give to our road contractors, just give you additional funding for it. So I think the funding in on the back end might be more money, but I think engineering forty-two, LKMA has been doing a lot of great work for us and they give us a great price.
Well, I'll tell you, you know, even the, I don't think it is that complicated as far as, as the scope of the project is. I think, you know, if we keep it simple, I was going to ask you to get an engineer for how many gallons are it about from, because we take a measurement from one side of the street to the other, how do we remove this water? Because it only goes a certain, it seems like it fills up, those negative ones, it seems like they're right in front of my house, in front of another neighbor's house, and they overflow and we're done. You know what I mean? So if we can figure out, and I don't think you have to hire, you know, a debauched construction company, you can do it in-house with the Department of Building as far as that goes or however you guys work, because it's, it's not a, an extremely complicated thing. We got to figure out, how do we get rid of this water?
Right, but there are multiple, there are multiple variables. Like for instance, when we do, when we do a water main project, we're doing Meadow, we'll, we'll pave it. I've asked the engineer to make sure that the site's just paving it, so it looks nice and okay, everyone rides on it, to make sure the flow lines are right. So part of the problem might be that the water sits in front of your house because the flow lines, it can't get away from your house. Those, if you don't pay attention to the design of the road, then you're going to have all the catch basins you want, it's going to puddle. So we're not just looking, we're looking at it... So we're not just looking, we're looking at it from all aspects, because I don't want to do this once, I want to do it right. I hope I have enough money, if I need more money, I'll come back to the board, say I need another $10,000, $15,000. That has happened, has, has with the roof. So I, I don't know what I don't know, but I'm going to a professional engineering firm, they chose because we've done work with them before, but they gave us a good price. We're bifurcating their, the RFP, because we want, we want to speed it up, not to do a cheap job, to do the right job. We think that we can take their professional information. We don't have the manpower in-house to do it. These guys, the engineers out there, they'll tell us exactly what we need to know, and then we design to that. And that's where the money's going to come in, because we might have 15 places we have to alter, we might have to buy big rings, we have to have the road designed, which I'm doing under the road program, so it's not being funded here, so we're getting flow lines straightened out, so I know the water is moving the right way. And part of that, the other day, I picked up my son from school for the season, and like I said, he's at Hofstra, instead of going down commercial and going north toward Tunco, I said, son, I want to take a detour. I went down the Meadow Street, and I watched the water go in at Collins. It's a 24-hour job.
You know, and it's funny, because today it rained before I came here, and I was like, this, I thought, wow, why are there floods right now? And I can sit there, I go to the village and say, hey?
One of the things I noticed, though, is that there's water on Clinton and the corner of Meadow. That's county water, which will stay on their road. So, well, that's part of the problem, because the county's done water on Meadow. It's, the county's supposed to keep the water on their road. So I saw that with my own eyes, I told the engineer about it, I said, when we're out there designing this road, you make sure that you take care of that instance, call Plan Auto and say, you got to increase your capacity, if the drains on their side, and then increase their capacity, I don't want that water, because I had flooding like that in my hometown. And part of the problem is diverting the county road back to the county road and keeping it off the main course anymore. We have to know where the problems are back, but this is the...
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your help. Thank you. Any other comments in the audience? Come on up.
Martin Toto, I'm 123 Meadow Street. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Swolzyn, for paying attention to the problem. I've been a resident in that location for 21 years. I've seen many floods, hurricanes and non-hurricanes, to the point that you go on vacation and you leave a message to the neighbor to say, call me if my, my house got water in. Literally, is, I'm one of the few residents that, as Chris said, goes to the drain to pull the plug out, so, so you can get the water out. As scary as it is, trust me, and we did, the case is close enough, that's the only way that we've been able to keep the water raising fast enough. Okay? So, so I, I'm not here to make any, but it is critical, and it is, it is nightmarish. We just had, one of my neighbors had a wall of damage in their house, and this has been happening twice a year, sometimes three times in the same year. So, so thank you for all the attention you've been paying, and I hope that this gets resolved. I fully agree with your plan. The plan is comprehensive, catches and captures all the...
I don't, like I said, I don't like water. I had residents complaining, not here, in my hometown. I've had flooding in my backyard for 50 years, and I'm like, how many people is that before me? But I solved the problem for them, because I put engineers on it. That's what I'm trying to do. Throw engineers, the problem, they'll know how to solve this, provide us, my engineers will get us there. The board, I'm sure, will provide us any funds needed. Their reasons, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Please, Tom.
Jonathan Martin, 173 Tollamore. I have a quick comment on eight, but I first like to thank Commissioner, Lieutenant Commissioner Jackson for having Officer Steve at the middle school today. I haven't dropped my daughter off, and he was not in uniform, but clear badge, and clearly presence at the, at the front of the school. She recognized him, told me that's who it was, good relationship with the kids, and I thought, in lieu of everything, I just wanted to make sure everyone knew. We took a wacky step right there. Regarding the roof, I just want to echo Ryan's point. We're talking about spending $37, regardless of which side the fence should stand on, we're talking about $37,000 today versus some of all that, regardless of whether it's demolished and we have to prepare it or we move it forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Jonathan.
Any, any other residents in the audience? We'll go to Zoom, Karen. Anybody on Zoom? On agenda items?
Anybody on Zoom? Yes, we have Bob Orros. Unmute yourself.
Yes, yes. Hear me?
Yes.
Okay. There is rumors flying around pertaining to St. Paul's. I'm on one of the subcommittees, Ryan is the steward, he's the chair of my committee on budget guidance. One of the rumors, a gentleman was up there before saying about the, some of the architectural treasures in that building that should be saved and so on. Now, I want to get an idea of this rumor, whether it's true or not, but the rumor says that the stained glass in the chapel has not been removed, has not been placed in storage, and has not been insured. Is that true or not?
I'm a Soros. The stained glass window is still in the building. We, you know, a few years back, I tried to get it removed, and we had trouble getting insurance. We went to our insurance carrier to, you know, figure out how to handle this, and many meetings, the stained glass that came up here, every time, every meeting I was saying, we're working on it, and that was the biggest, that was the biggest problem, was trying to get someone to ensure the removal of that stained glass. We do have a tiffany window there, that's probably, I'd say, on the order of a million dollars worth of glass, that one window. And we tried everything. In fact, there was an email today to our insurance carrier about the stained glass. So it's, it hasn't been completed, no. And I'm not sure if, if we want to forward it, it's going to cost money to do that now. As part of the regional stabilization, there's not much funding left in there.
There was another one about a report back when, pretty much when we first purchased the building, of two underground oil tanks. One is 10,000 gallons, and the other is 2,000 gallon oil tank. They should have both been removed by somewhere in the 1990s. Was that done?
Okay, um, 1990s, I was working in the city, I don't know about that, but I can tell you that the last two weeks, Nassau County keeps track of all storage tanks, above ground, on the ground, water tanks, diesel tanks, and there is an oil tank in the building. I'm not sure the capacity, Mrs. Givinello, do you know what capacity is?
It's a 5,000 gallon.
So we have a 5,000 gallon tank, and they, we are in the process of removing it. We were going to abandon it in place with sand, but then we figured down the road, we have to take it out anyway, so why pay twice for it? So we're just having to take, it's about the same amount to take it out now. So we're removing any residual oil or sludge in the bottom, I think it might be a few inches.
Three inches.
Three inches. And we're going to take it out. We have a firm that handles this stuff environmentally correctly, and that'll...
All around pumping tank, to be exact. They're on contract.
Thank you very much. So it'll be taken out very soon. I don't think the 10,000 one is there, I'm not sure. That's gone, okay. So the 5,000's coming out any day now.
There was also a report that if you didn't take it out, another, it was taped at the time they expected it, back in the 1990s, but they said that eventually it will start leaking into the soil. If the tape is removed from the ground, the soil is expected...
It's a, it's a, it's a double containment fiberglass tank. It will not leak, there's a, there's a time to the tank, which is approximately about 30 years. So I think we're just in that threshold, the tank has to be removed. It's in the best interest of the village to move it now, because my understanding, if we do fix this building, we're going to go probably to gas or some other mechanism of, of, of heating or, or... We'd have no use oil. We'd be replacing this tank anyway if we went through, oil would be costly anyway. So both tanks will be gone. The 10,000 ones removed sometime in the past, the 5,000 will be removed in June of 2022.
Thank you, Mr.
There's another rumor going around that the, that the senior center on North Bub Lane is sinking into the ground. Is there any proof in that?
I don't, I don't, I've never heard that rumor. And Mr. Blake, are you aware of any safety?
I know Venice is safe.
Yeah, Venice is safe.
I mean, it's something with the, something with the concrete slab that, that is, I know my building, and it's, it's actually going into the ground.
There is no truth to that rumor. The issue that we're having at the senior center right now is a matter of the subflooring in the new addition. It is not structural. We have been down, Mr. Givinello and Mr. Baroni, Village Engineer and myself, have inspected the columns and the mountings under the building. They are oversized for the use of the building. The problem is with the underlayment of the tile floor, it is just not strong enough. We are going to remove the tile, put down a new underlayment, and put a new floor on it, but no, the building is not sinking.
And just so you know, that, that...
As I say, it's a rumor, that's all.
Mr. Orros, that building was donated, that, that building was donated by the government when they built the columns on Franklin, and they donated to the village, and we transported it in...
I know that.
Right, so, so it wasn't meant, it wasn't meant to be a permanent structure, and that's why, even though it's, that's why the subfloor has to be replaced.
Thank you. Any other comments on Zoom, Karen?
Anybody else on Zoom have a comment on an agenda item only? Seeing none, we will move on.
The first goal of our business now is to approve the minutes of the previous group of trustees meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the business of May 19th orders? I'll make a motion, we approve them. Your favor? Thank you. Let's now move on to non-agenda items. Oh, excuse me, sorry. I'll say... You want to make a motion, Peter? So I put you on the spot. I'll make a motion for the...
Minus number nine.
Minus number nine.
Second nine.
Concerned, passes minus number nine. Now we can go on to non-agenda items. Does anybody in the audience have any questions or comments on non-agenda items? Please come to the podium, state your name and address, please.
Hi, thank you. My name is Japha McGinnis, 115 Second Street. And I'd like to comment about the proposal of the dog park.
Please, people in the back, please speak one. Thank you.
A dog park on Second Street affect the quality of life of the residents because of the increased noise, traffic, lights, smell of dog feces as well. Another location such as St. Paul's is center of town, is 30 acres of property already being maintained by the village. A dog park there would not impact the residents like it will here. So I'd just like to express my concerns, and that's just concerns. The first is access to the gate that will be there. How will you ensure that residents only use the park? Will it be gated with a security guard on duty during the hours of operation, or, as I've read, may you issue fobs for entry into the park? If you do, how do you control the number of hours that people are using the park? How do you prevent them from bringing non-resident dog owners with them? Another concern is, what is your proposal for the waste disposal? How often will it be cleaned? Parking, traffic is a huge issue on Second Street. We have inadequate parking for the residents on Second Street and Hamilton. How many people have you anticipated will be using the park daily? What are you determined to be the most popular days and times is going to take away from the parking lot that we're already, is, is already in demand? Second Street is a dangerous street to cross. The residents have trouble because the, the car's speed and there's a lot of traffic. So now we're going to increase traffic and add to this problem. Noise. Have you considered the impact when the residents having to listen to constant dog blocking? Lighting. What type of lighting are you planning to put in? You'll need lighting, especially in the fall and the winter seasons. Will it be obtrusive? Will it potentially come into people's windows? Ground cover. It's a beautiful lawn there, beautiful little park with swings. Are you going to leave the grass, which will be hard for you to maintain? Are you going to use mulch, sand, artificial grass, which actually costs a lot of money? Fencing. What are we looking at? What material is the fencing going to be made of? How high are these fences going to be that we have to look at at the corner of Hilton and Second Street? And finally, taxes. Is this going to increase the taxes for the Garden City residents? And for me as a property owner, am I going to be reassessed and the property value decreased where I live? And these are just concerns, and I'd just like to say thank you for letting me express these concerns.
Thank you. Any other residents in the audience? Who should speak?
Marion Russell, the board president, at Hamilton Gardens, and everybody in our complex is very upset about the dog park. We were not notified that this was even a consideration, and all of a sudden it's dumped right in front of our windows. I don't think that's fair. You can even put it by the train station in the middle of town, but not over there. We have too much trouble over there with the parking. So I think you should consider the residents of our area over there.
Hi, everybody, how are you? Actually, I'm concerned about the, everybody is talking...
Please, sorry. Your name and address.
Oh, I'm Kevir, I live into the Second Street. And my concern about the dog thing, so everything about the expenditure and thing, we know that, we have a problem into the, into the Meadow Street and the St. Paul. So why don't you guys concern about those things first, then you're going to start thinking about the, about the dog, because it is also involved the expenditure and everything about the maintenance. So if you guys concerned about this thing, please, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, trustees, and parking heads. My name is Arthur King Cohen, I live at 85 Second Street, in Garden City between Hilton and Cathedral. I moved there nine years ago, and one of the main reasons why I purchased, I had three little kids at the time, and that little park, like you said before, it's a beautiful little park, has a swing set, and over the years, my kids, I really got my money's worth if you really utilize that park. Today was an amazing day for me, an absolute, probably one of the best days of my life. After three years, my mother grew 82, my aunt grew 87, my brother and my two little nephews flew over North Carolina, I wasn't able to see them, it was COVID, and we spent a day at that park. We had a picnic, and they utilized the swings, it's a three-year-old and a five-year-old, and many people came out that day. It was early before the rain, around 3 o'clock, between 2:00 and 3:00. Many families were out there with their little, well, grandparents and kids on the park, and it was worth every single dollar that I spent on that house, and that, those houses are not cheap. Today, it was worth every single penny. I'm against it, for many reasons. Let's just talk about other parks. Eisenhower Park has a off-the-leash dog park. Matter of fact, there are 39 dog parks off the leash within 20-mile vicinity of Garden City. No reason for one here. Everyone, I'm hearing everyone wants a dog park. We, I'm sure everyone wants a dog park, but just not near their house. Gross Park is actually, there's a de facto off-the-leash dog park there, where the south end, where people let their dogs run freely. I actually took a little survey recently, and they're against a dog park, even in the area that they're using for a dog park. One of my concerns, to be honest with you, is I found out about this last week. One of my friends is on the board of, is on the Recreation Commission. He told me about this meeting that was happening today. It's a big deal. No one was notified. I'm the one notified. I'm the one notified, whoever came today. I knocked on 115 Hamilton. Okay, I knocked on his door. I knocked on other people's doors and told them what was going on. They were shocked what was happening. No flyers could have been passed out, not even a posting. I found it on the, I was, I'm the one who, but I was looking for it. I happened to find it on the Garden City Village website on Monday. Someone wanted to put a shed in their backyard too close to a property line. It's at the train station in Garden City. Nothing was posted about that. What if I wasn't here tonight? What if you guys didn't change the, change the meeting for another night? I think we have a right to express our concerns. And I have a plethora of many other concerns. No need to get into it right now. I want to go home and see my mother. Okay, so I'm gonna take off, but I'll, I'm looking forward to next meeting to, and talk about it a little bit more.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Cohen?
I'm sorry? Yes. Oh, I thought you called me.
I did.
Oh, sorry.
You guessed that one right. Just so that you and the other individuals have spoken, the matter was taken off the calendar and the matter withdrawn for the very reason that you and others have said. It's important that when you speak to the trustees, that you have a degree of confidence that we share the concerns that you have. And in this particular case, I as a resident would want to have the knowledge that I was being listened to. So even before any of you spoke, rest assured that the information that the trustees obtained was deemed to be insufficient. And quite candidly, we hear you, we understand you. I just want to make sure that you know that your concerns and those concerns expressed by others are realized by us and that it is not going to be acted upon until it is fully vetted.
And that's exactly why I voted for you, Mr. Deegan. And I appreciate that. I know who you are. I know who you are. I voted for you.
You lived over there.
No, no, just a tree on the street.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too. Sorry, sorry too. I just happened to be home with my.
God to your mom. God to your mom. Yes, sir. Come on up.
Hi, good evening. Mr. Mayor and Board of Trustees, I've never been up on here before. So this is.
So relax, relax.
Okay, cool.
Say anything you want.
All right. So my name is Cyril Morey. I'm a longtime resident of Garden City. I've lived, I moved here in 1977, also 1900, right? And I wanted to address the dog park. Oh, sorry, 47 Grove Street, Grove Street next to the park. And I want to change the discussion regarding this dog park because there's something that we haven't been discussing. And I'll start with us. I consider myself an expert. I've lived with dogs for 25 years. I've raised them and I've nurtured them. I went through a really tough time living in Dallas. And the only thing that kept me going was my dog. I brought him back. We rented a U-Haul, packed everything that I had, which was very little, and took my dog back. And we came back to Garden City back home. For the last five years now, I've been a dog walker in the eastern section of Garden City. And I have immersed myself with the families of these dog owners. I've become part of their family. And I've seen the transformation that these dogs have made for these families. We're living in really difficult times now. People are very angry. Past four years pandemic, political discord, we're very divided. And these dogs have been healing our families. The science is there. I'm not going to rehash the science. The science is there. Please take the time to, to look into the science about how these dogs do so much good for our families. They heal our families and we need healing. I know that people are angry about whatever. And I know that people have concerns about these dog parks. But here's the thing, the dogs are the future. During the pandemic, so many families got puppies, you know, to raise our morale during a really, really, really tough time. Right? During the pandemic, while everyone was at home, I was walking your dogs, patrolling the streets of Garden City. You know, when you've got a 200-pound Tibetan Mastiff walking at 11 o'clock at night, I promise you, no one's going to mess with us. They are a dissuasive force. They keep us safe at home. And they keep us, they keep our, they keep the love going. Soon I have clients who have lost spouses. I have clients who have lost children. And the only thing they have left are these dogs. And we need to encourage these people to love their dogs, to go outside in nature, enjoy nature, and associate with each other. Because, you know, these people, when, when we're out with our dogs, we talk about great things. We talk about how much we love our dogs. We don't talk about politics. We talk about just really, really good stuff. And that's healing the community. Every, every problem is an opportunity in disguise. As I said before, dogs are the future. And people who come to the village with their dogs are happy and they want to spend money on their dogs. We've got a storefront next to Key Food that's been shut down for a while. I bet you, if we had a little imagination, we could do something with dogs that could bring some foot traffic back into our village. The opportunity is there. These dogs are so awesome. They've done so much for me. I couldn't even begin to tell you. I've seen these dogs transform lives. That has so much value. That just goes beyond parking and light and what have you. Now, I understand these concerns. As a dog walker, my motto, I used to walk around with a backpack, little garbage can. And my motto was, the poop that I pick up is the one that I don't step on. And I would go around with extra bags and pick up dog poop. Because here's the thing that I guess we're not really, dog poop is toxic to the soil. You don't want it laying around. And it's disgusting. I'm, I, I live in Garden City. I don't want, you know, people pooping on my lawn or the curb or what have you. I, I try to encourage people to, to be responsible. I'm no longer a dog walker. I, I left that business, if you know, a while ago. But I am, well, I am now a consultant. And I'm dedicating my work to helping people realize what these dogs can bring. And we were talking earlier about.
You okay?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I'm good. I'm just, I didn't prepare for this speech. I'm just really flying off. So anyway, let me just back up a little bit. I started a consulting agency, professional consultant. It's called Cywalker.org. And what I'm doing is, I'm actually leaving the country for another client. But what I'm doing is, I'm dedicating my project to helping Garden City with this dog park. What I'm starting with is, we're going to invest in dog receptacles with free bags for Custer Field. And then we'll take it from there. My, my offer is to fund these with the cooperation of the village, wherever you feel, you know, it would be appropriate to have these to, to make them convenient and useful. And Cywalker Foundation will fund these dog poop receptacles. I think that's the biggest concern that people have. I know people have concerns with the traffic. I know that people, what really gets under people's skins is the dog poop. And that's something that we can do about. We can educate the people in Garden City who are dog owners. And we can resolve these problems. But we have to focus on the big picture. And the big picture is, these dogs are saving lives. They're making our families stronger. They're making our children stronger. And we need that. And we need these, these dogs to be a part of our society. They are a part of our society. And they, and they deserve this dog park. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
My name's Michelle Florence. I live 117 Second Street. I wasn't going to speak, but I am a dog owner. I walk my dogs four times, my dog four times a day. And I do collect their supplements. I'm totally against the dog park, although I'd love to have a dog park nearby. Second Street, I moved there just over a year ago. It's very busy. We have little parking in front of our building. During the week, we have parkers, cars from the car dealerships that park their cars along the road. There's little parking. The traffic is, is horrible. I mean, on a, on a monthly, twice a month, somebody runs over the sign of the crossing between Hamilton House and the parking lot. It's, it's just, it's too much for us to handle to have a dog park.
Well, it's late and I haven't had dinner either. Ryan, I'm already on 47 Hampton Road. I just had a question for the Commissioner or a concern, Commissioner Jackson. As far as the school safety, I was listening earlier. And I was wondering if you've talked recently about the safety protocols with the administration? Because during COVID, those protocols changed or were bypassed somehow. They came into the practice of leaving several doors in each facility open during the winter for fear of COVID. We have several pictures of the doors unattended. The bottom sills of the windows on the first floors of nearly every school open some two to three feet, only maybe 15 yards from the sidewalk. And I thought at one point, you know, the door, it was supposed to be a single entryway, check-in, check-out. And I know at the high school alone, there's at least three or four doors open, especially during the winter season.
Circumstances change things. Again, we do not control the schools. We, we recommend and we will patrol. But as far as we're concerned, overall, the administration has been receptive to any time we make suggestions. And when we walk through the schools now, sometimes the student will leave the door open habits, especially when we get to the higher grades. And we're making recommendations all the time. We're making observations all the time. So yes, during COVID, they did that. I think it was because of the air quality and everything else. But that was their decision, not ours. We were, we were aware of that. And we made sure our officers knew that. That, you know, it's like your radio, when your car goes down a little bit, you have to keep your antennas up. So, but, you know, stuff like this, it's, you know, it's sad that it happened, but it does reinforce the need for security. And that just, not just in the schools, you know, when we go out and, you know, any, any place you go where people congregate, you got to be aware. And that's what we try to do with the schools. And they're receptive. And we'll just let you know, I was on the phone with Dr. Siton at 11:30 that night, 6 o'clock the next morning, as I was going to the high school. So every time I call them, they answer and use the address what we tell them. So, you know, that's, to me, that's a good thing. Again, you know, it's like doing traffic enforcement. You're not going to catch everybody. You try to, you try to limit what could happen. And that's what we're doing.
Any other comments on the, in the audience on Zoom, Karen?
Steve Alardi, 139 Meadow. Couple of questions were sent to me because the EPOA group knew I was going to be here tonight. One of the questions, any of the suggestions or findings from the fire committee, have any of them started to be implemented?
Well, the answer to that question is yes, no, and maybe. So I'll start off with the yes. The difficulty with implementation has to do with getting all the pieces together at the right time. Clearly, the condition of the actual physical buildings necessarily has to be resolved so that we can address other issues that can be likewise implemented. That, and I believe the department needs to have the ability to use those facilities to implement some of the other recommendations. The chiefs have been looking at some of the internal recommendations with regard to duty crews and the right. They have been working extremely hard on the recruitment issues. The difficulty with getting the training center, which was one of the recommendations, has to do with the ability for the village's engineering department to have time. And as you have heard, they have been tasked with a number of items that have a higher priority. So while things do not appear on the surface to have been moving along, they actually are. And hopefully, we will be in a position to implement some of the other suggestions that have occurred. As you know, the lead time for a fire truck is anywhere between 18 and 36 months. So one of the recommendations that was made was to standardize the engine companies. But you can't standardize an engine company until you know where you're actually going to put it and what the configuration is. Sort of like when you build a building, even before you have the plans drawn, somebody's going to say, is the light switch on the left or is the light switch on the right? And I said, well, I have is a piece of dirt in front of me. Why are you asking me all these questions? Having built my house from dirt. My wife said to me, where are we having the swing of the door to the dining room? I said, dear, where's the dining room? It's still dirt. So the short answer to your question is there was a lot of time and effort involved in the recommendations for the fire safety, fire safety proposal. However, along with many other items, has to percolate up with the priorities that are also being put forth on the village's resources. Thank you for asking that question and giving me the opportunity to respond.
Secretary Edman?
So Chief Per, which you brought up, thanks, Bruce, about standardizing the engines. You might mention how that enhances the training as opposed to being trained differently so that people understand.
Sure. And I'll try to make this quick because I know people have been here for a while. So currently in the fleet, there are three engines. Each stationed throughout the village, they're currently made by three different manufacturers. We have similar layouts, similar equipment. However, unfortunately, it's not standardized. It's variations throughout. When it comes to the training, as Trustee Ryan mentioned, unfortunately, when you get trained on one engine, you still have to get trained on the others. The purpose and one of the recommendations that we discussed, the standardization is if you get trained on one engine and the fleet's standardized, you're trained on all of them, which then makes it easier in terms of time commitment, training perspective for any member of the department, you have to train on one engine, you're trained on all of them. And that will alleviate our concerns when apparatus goes out of service. So we don't have to rotate rigs around, we don't have to worry about who's qualified and what apparatus at that point. So we'll make the training and the qualification process much easier and take less of a burden on us in regards to training going forward. Hope that answers.
Thank you very much.
The other item was the parking over at Rink and Court. Has anything been looked at since the parking lot has been closed? Has anything been looked at since the parking lot has been closed and the amount of parking? And any issues when the fields are fully utilized?
We're about to determine if restriping of the existing Stewart Avenue parking lot will add sufficient spaces to the normal use. The only date that there was a substantial problem is when, about a week ago, St. Joseph's School had their field day and Stewart School was in session, which is a rather unusual circumstance that you would have a large athletic event and Stewart School being in session. And that created parking issues on that particular day. Other than that, there's been a lot of monitoring of it by the trustees and others. And the overflow into the Clinton Road Stewart School parking lot has been ineffective. To our observations, the gates have been unlocked on the weekends so that there's direct access to the fields from the Stewart School parking lot. And that seems to have been a benefit. And people are getting acquainted with the fact that they can roll over there and still have a short walk. They don't have to be the 58th car in the Stewart Avenue parking lot. They can be the first car in the Stewart School parking lot and have an easy walk. So right now, it's evaluating whether, as we said long ago, restriping Stewart Avenue parking lot would add 10 spaces or 22 spaces. And that's something the village is going to look at and get back to us on. But that's where we are right now.
And is there enough handicap? I mean legally, maybe there is, but is there enough handicap parking in that Stewart lot now so people who used to utilize that back lot and limit the walk would have more access rather than going to Stewart School?
Well, that's a good idea. I mean, you know, if, certainly if Stewart School gets more utilized, it might make sense to, in the restriping, add a few handicap spaces to the Stewart Avenue parking lot because that's obviously a more accessible and easier walk than from Stewart School for the handicap.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from the audience? Anybody on Zoom? Seeing none, and give a motion.
No, no, I have, I have, I have a comment. Sorry.
Excuse me, sorry.
Mr. Vasalotti, is that you?
Yes, Robin Vasalotti, 30 Princeton. Thank you. You know, I didn't want to jump in earlier because these conversations were pretty intense regarding some of these areas of town that seem to be, you know, obviously important as far as the dog park and the money concerns. I will say, I did a little research while I was talking about the money. And you look at some old maps going back to, you know, 1800s in Nassau County, some of the topo maps, there is a stream and a lake and then water issue that goes south of the metal. Like to be certainly causing some problems there. So it can be a larger issue. And it's hidden underground someplace, I'm sure. But at any rate, I also agree that the dog park is probably too close to residential area. So I emphasize that all those who spoke earlier about that, perhaps the dog park is warranted, but maybe just in another location. At any rate, I'd like to turn my attention back to the estate section by Merrillon as I have been for many weeks and months. And it's been going on for years. They first started taking the trees down in 2018, November or September. I forget, I think it was November of 2018. And it's really time that we start to ask them to put the pedal to the metal. I know their railroad is planting trees in a big way right now. I'm super happy to see that. And they're rather large pines and many of them going in as we speak. They're watering them, they're caring for them, they put a lot of topsoil. But in the meanwhile, you know, every day, people are crossing the road over there. And we haven't as much as Martin Road. We haven't as much as a sign that says New York State law says, you know, pedestrians. I think there's one sign that's left by Roxbury that's pretty well hidden, but it's the only one. People continue to come off the trains in about five locations on the south side of the platform there as they return from the city. You know, our residents get off the train, come down the steps, and bow, you're out into Main Avenue with cars coming down at all speeds. There's no crosswalks as though, again, you know, the sign or any kind of sign that says, you know, caution or anything like that. There's some old lines from when they had temporary crossings. They don't even retain two crossings anymore that should be removed. But it's just an accident waiting to happen until we decide how we're reconfiguring Main Avenue and the traffic flow there, which our engineering department is working on as Mr. Roth and Biller and others have brought forth some ideas and trustee Cheston. And so the point I'm making is we have pedestrians at risk just getting off the train every day and every night. And someone really needs to look at it. I've also written to Long Island Railroad and asked President Rinaldi to perhaps find time to meet with you guys and to also come out here and take a look at this as well for herself. Whether she does or not, I have no idea. Whether she even reads my communication, I have no idea. But I think it'd be nice if she walked the property. The other place that's an accident waiting to happen is at New Lake Park. Again, our residents, if you cross over from Clinch across New Lake Park Road, good luck, there's no crosswalk. You exit at Clinch as a pedestrian, try to cross over New Lake Park Road to get to the other side or vice versa, come off the train, come across the road. There's no crossing there at all. There's no sign that says slow down. On the north side of the bridge, there's crossing, what I probably wouldn't feel to say crossing over there. And much sooner cross at the southern side of the bridge where Clinch meets New Lake Park Road. But again, no crosswalks, no sign. And they're flying through there now. Also, you know, with that in mind, we need to think about Nassau Boulevard crossings. And I know some of these roads are county roads. But we need to be vocal with the county, we need to be vocal with the railroad, and we need to be vocal with our own engineering department to make sure that we reconfigure Main Avenue slash Merrillon between Nassau Boulevard, Houston, Wellington, Roxbury, and Middletown, not to mention Deadwood. So again, I'm just bringing it up again because it's taken light years for this project to finish. The planning is great to see, but there's a lot of structural and pedestrian issues at the station itself that still need to be addressed and looked at. So I thank you for listening.
Thank you.
I just wanted to go with something.
Okay. Robin, if you're still on, those are very good points. I don't know the chances of getting President Rinaldi to take a walking tour. It'd be great. We could certainly try. But Anthony Tofano was the head of the railroad part of the project, is someone I think we should bring in and have some kind of meeting, may or myself or maybe some of the trustees with him to address this issue. And of course, Mr. Swazi. Yeah, it is dangerous. But there are going to be a lot of things going on in regard to it. The third track construction is responsible for repairing the roads that have been damaged during the course of this project. So it is going to be massive road repair, which I'm sure you're aware of. And one of the reasons which we're discussing the project that Mr. Roth and Bill put together is to work in conjunction of that, if in fact we get to do that, because of course there'll be a public hearing on it. But yes, that is a concern. I picked my daughter up at this station numerous times, and it's dark and she's kind of walking along the curve there. So it has to be addressed, and that's going to be kind of our next step, I think.
Thank you. I do, go ahead.
I was going on to another topic, actually, but so you won't finish.
Are you responding to me? Because I just have one other thing.
Robin, thank you. Thanks, Robin.
I just, I just, I just have one thing to add.
We'll be in touch, Mr. Vasalotti. Thank you.
But I just, I just have one thing to add, and that is I'd like to thank Karen Allman and the people who are creating remote meetings because there's 29 of us remote tonight that may not actually have ever gotten a chance to be there tonight. But there's 29 people on remote, so I think it's a great thing that you've been providing to all of us here. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Just the one thing I wanted to mention is everyone should have gotten their drinking water report in the mail.
Yes.
And the EAB is hosting a meeting. I hope you can all make it next Wednesday night, 7:30 here by Zoom. Thank you to our EAB members for putting this together. Ralph Swazi will be there as well as a consultant for H2M. You'll get an overview of the water report. Because I know it's sometimes hard, you know, to understand all the details. There'll be an opportunity to ask any questions you have about the water report. You'll get an update on water, you know, the water report is for 2021. So we'll give you an update. There's also going to be a presentation on the importance of water conservation and tips on water conservation, and of course, an update on the power line service line inventory. So bring your water report, your water bill, and looking forward to seeing everyone there.
Are there any other comments, Karen, on Zoom?
Anybody else on Zoom? Anybody else on Zoom last, last call? Seeing none?
Seeing none.
Yeah, 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 yeah. This is Mary Quinn.
Mary Quinn, is that you, Mary?
Yeah, one second, 172 Second Street.
Go ahead, Mary.
I want to, I just want to ask the board how we came about having Second Street as an area for a dog park? They go around and knock on a progressman's door and ask them if it would be okay? Did they ask anybody around the neighborhood? Did they ask the trustees that live in our neighborhood that's about to do a park? And I wondered how they came about thinking that the park would be, on Second Street, would be an awesome place for a dog park where we can barely park carts already. We have people zooming up and down the street at least 100 miles an hour. What we really need there is a speed bump. And not a dog park. So I was just wondering, how did you decide on Second Street? Could somebody answer?
Yeah, Recreation Commission was approached almost two years ago by a group of residents who were interested in the possibility of having a dog.
Residents of where? What street?
Residents of the village of Garden City. I don't have their addresses. It was a group of people that came to our meeting. There were about 40 people in the room, and they expressed interest in our picking up a proposal, which had actually been brought before the commission several years ago under Commissioner Oker's tenure. And the commission listened to the residents and began to look at different locations throughout the village. And with the help of a consultant who is a dog park expert, we looked at.
Could I have his name?
I'm sorry?
Could I have his name? I need to give him a call.
Well, the consultant's name is Dr. Marilyn Glasser.
Okay, thank you.
If you do an internet search on Marilyn Glasser, dog parks, you'll find her name. She came in during Mr. Oker's tenure and had reviewed the sites. She came in for us at that time and again reviewed the sites that Mr. Oker had shown her and some other sites. We took her to just about every open space in the village. Based upon what she saw, she recommended a couple of sites, which the commission then looked at over the past year or so and deliberated and came to the conclusion that none of the sites were perfect, but Second and Hilton was the best choice at this time.
Did you ask the residents, though? That's my question. Did you ask anybody on Second Street?
We had the members of the commission went back to the residents that they knew and through their affiliations with either FabGC or the POAs, they brought feedback back to us. We had residents that were in favor of it and residents that were opposed to it.
Actually, there's a board member whose mother lives on Second Street. I don't think she'd be happy to have a dog park here. You've got to change, you've got to change it. Really, this is like the worst. Second Street, Sixth Street, by the train station. There's plenty of parking over there. People can walk, you walk the dogs over there. There's plenty of room. Nobody ever parks in that railroad parking. And the old people in the neighborhood can walk the dogs over, come from Seventh Street, walk the dogs over, have a little dog park party. But asking the residents of Second Street to have one more thing on Second Street? We have parking from Ford that parks all day long, honking horns. They don't mow the lawn across the street. But we really live in like your lost dumpster on Second Street. And it's really not fair.
I just want to clarify that the Board of Trustees didn't make a recommendation on this. This was the Recreation Commission put it on the agenda, and we opted to take it off the agenda. So I don't know if you were under the impression that the Board of Trustees had taken action, but we didn't put it on the agenda.
Just so that you are certain about the process. The Recreation Commission had a mission to address some residents who wanted to have a dog park. Because the Recreation Commission by itself neither has the authority to act nor the ability to implement, their thought process then goes to the Board of Trustees. The Board of Trustees then, as part of its oversight, is required to determine if in fact that agenda item moves forward. As you may have heard earlier in the evening, that agenda item was in fact removed. So while you and other residents have a concern, the board shares the commentary that we have heard with regard to the possibility of having a dog park in the village. Since the item is no longer on the agenda and has been removed, no action will be taken. So you can rest assured that your comments have been heard and we understand the issues that you have raised. Thank you.
Does anybody else on Zoom have a comment? Seeing none there.
Seeing no other comments, I'd like to make a motion to close the meeting. Hi. I mean, it's close. Thanks to everyone for coming.